There you are, there's two Pams. Yeah, I'm gonna get rid of the old, oh, I don't know if I can get rid of the old Pam without getting rid of the new Pam. I don't want to get rid of any Pam, but.
That's okay.
I guess it's working, it's working, alright, good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Miracle.
There we go.
Yeah, I don't know how long I, I'm waiting for the. They're coming to get my mom to move her, so I don't know how long I'll be on for, but I'm here now.
Okay. That's good. Alright, we're gonna start with you then. Thank you, welcome everybody. Let's see, what do we have for a quorum? We need five, we have five. Alright, does anybody wanna move to approve the minutes from May sixteenth meeting?
Sure. I moved to approve the meeting.
And Pam moves. Right, is. And moves. And. Who's second?
I can't, I wasn't on.
I don't know if I read them. I'll second. And then, I just sent you the updated sheet too, because I didn't know that you were coming on.
That's okay, I, I, I'm not gonna be able to look at it, because I don't know how long I'm gonna be here for.
Okay.
I'm doing this on my phone in a, like a weird room.
Oh, you're on your phone now, okay.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in the hospital.
Ugh, well, thank you for getting on, how, how, well, we'll talk later. Uh, okay, Kevin, I guess we can go ahead then.
Right, so let's say. Uh, June, June twentieth meeting, who wants to move for that?
I'm happy.
Pam was, Mari was here.
Yep.
Pam, you said, did I hear you? Pam moves?
Sure.
Mari, you on a second? You were here?
Sure.
Mari seconds. All in favor?
I don't think I was there.
You were not.
Okay, I was gonna say, so I abstained.
That's fine. Approved. Alright, good. Um, since Pam is, um, of unknown duration here, let's, let's, let's walk. Take care of business, Pam-related business. How about the, um, we have a new visitor, welcome Sarah Connor, we also have Janet, as usual. And we have Sarah Connor, hi Sarah, now we can see you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, thank you for joining Sarah.
Coming.
Of course, I am in my car, so.
Good, so I understand you're interested in pollinator pathway. Issues.
Right. So, uh, we, we had a lucky occurrence in that Sarah, uh, ordered a pollinator pathway sign last year. And then asked the pollinator pathway how to get more involved here in Trumbull, and they referred her to me as the resident expert, which I don't know if I am, but anyway. Um, so Sarah and I finally got a chance to talk on the phone, and Sarah is also a member of the Nichols Garden Club. And it would, it would be kinda nifty if we could kind of, uh, find a way to collaborate on projects around town that were pollinator pathway. Related. Um, I think we'd need Parks and Rec to kinda work with us on that. Um, one of the things that someone on, on the trail at Tate recently asked me was. You know, they just planted all these pollen, these, uh, native shrubs here along the parking lot, but it's full of weeds now. Are they, are they going to weed it? And I'm like, you know, that might be an interesting project to do. It's not as sexy as planting flowers, but you know. If there's things like that around town that we can work with Dimitri on, or, or, and along with Sarah or the garden clubs around town, I think that would be a nice. Nice thing to do. And certainly worth some points towards bronze or silver.
Alright, so what do we have as far as, um, pollinator pathway? Uh, locations in town, projects in town. Uh, things that are related to pollinator pathway, we've got whatever's happening in, uh. In Twin Brooks, right?
Right, Long Hill Garden Club worked with Dimitri on funding for a native garden, pollinator garden by the Vietnam Blitz Memorial.
Okay.
Um, that doesn't mean that could be the only thing there, because there's certainly plenty of land. Um. We, I put the planter up at Tate Road, the Trailhead planter there with a sign and a QR code. Richard, you hear that? I put up QR code.
Yeah.
Um. But I don't think that there's much else around town. I mean, there's native plantings at Old Mine, but it's not there as a pollinator pathways specifically.
So is the nature, does the nature center have, um, is it, does it have a pollinator pathway designation of any kind? I know it's got a pollinator designation.
Cheryl bought a sign for the nature center two summers ago. And she had it out, and then when you guys did the work in the back, she brought it inside for a time, but I think you're on the map.
Okay, so if we're on the map, then that's good to know, because that's another opportunity that we might think about.
Yeah. Definitely, I mean, you've got that one little fenced-in pollinator area, but there's plenty of room to plant more.
Oh yeah, and we're always looking to do. Stuff. Um, there's, there's, there's much to do there. Um, so let's keep that in mind. Um. So Sarah, the, what is the, the Nichols Garden Club? Do they have anything, are they active in? Any particular area that you're, any specific location or any other projects, or what's going on there that you're? That they're doing, that you might link? Pollinator pathway into.
So, we just, um, received a very small, but a stepping stone grant, um, to do a project on the, um, NIA property, um, ball field between where the parking lot is. And, um, where they have the farmer's market, so it's like very overrun, um, you know, with weeds and invasives in that area. Um, and so the garden club received a small grant that we would like to slowly start to, um, take over that area and make like a pollinator meadow out of it.
So would you say that was near the ball field and, um? And the parking lot?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just taking notes here, so.
Yeah, so, um, it's a very large area, um, and it's a big project, um, but. It's somewhere to start.
Do they have, do they have anything there now? Um, what, what is in that location now? Is it just, is it mode? Is it, is it a mess? Is it, what is it?
It's a mess, it's a big mess.
Invasives, invasives and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We get that everywhere, right? So, alright, so, so they're working on, how many people are active in the Nichols?
Um, about thirty, of course, there are some members that are a lot more active than others, and we're definitely going through like. Um. A, a rebirth process too, so there's a lot of people now in the summertime, we're renewing membership, though. Um, some people are leaving, but a lot of membership is increasing, so it's just, you know, kinda growing with the population of the town, and that's changing, so. Um, we're hoping to do more like community-based projects. Um, going forward, because I know that hasn't been necessarily the garden club, um, you know, reputation in the past. But we're looking to be a little bit more active in the community.
Okay, so that's, that's one of your main projects in the community then, is at the NIA? Ball field there.
Yeah, we recently did, um, the gardens at the NIA Stark Weather House also, but it wasn't, um, it wasn't like a funded thing, and it was really just using what we had based out of, um. Members' gardens, so it's not necessarily native. Um, nothing invasive, but, um, maybe like going forward in the future, we can involve native plants to have that be something that we called on the pollinator pathway, but then again, the NIA board just sort of all switched over also, so we're working with a whole new, um, group of people there.
Okay, how long have you been on, uh, in that, uh, garden club, at Nichols?
Um, about three years.
Okay.
Hey Sarah, do, do you guys ever talk about partnering with other garden clubs in town, or is that kind of a, a forbidden subject?
Um. We haven't necessarily talked about that.
Okay.
Um, I don't think it would be something we're too, too, too opposed to, maybe some members other, you know, more than others, but. It would be something interesting to look into, especially since Long Hill's membership is so much bigger. Um, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
How many garden clubs are there? I know there's Long Hill and Nichols, are there other ones too?
Um.
Did Michael Murray have one for a time? He was at the community garden?
I feel, that name sounds familiar, that he was doing like workshops. Is that?
Yeah, I don't. He did plant up at the community garden, um, he was able to get that going, but I don't think it's really a garden club per se.
Yeah, that name sounds very familiar.
Pam, what do you think? Uh, Mel would probably have some more insight and. I don't know, ideas in terms of funding maybe, I don't know.
Well, I think that, you know. Other towns do projects around the pollinator pathway, because I see it on their social. Uh, especially like Fairfield, Westport does things, Cheshire certainly has done things. And they put up signage, they, they get a lot of press for what they're doing, so it spreads the word about native plants, and no pesticides. But I think that if we don't get buy-in and, um. At least buy-in, not necessarily funding, but buy-in from Parks and Rec. To, you know, sanction certain areas where we work, or kind of, you know, fighting an uphill battle.
Yeah, well, that's why I say the nature center is not Parks and Rec.
Right, well, that would be a good, one good place to start for sure.
Yeah.
They're just doing all the work, um, since it is the Nichols Garden Club, um, all the work that's been going on at the Historical Society. So, that might be, I would think, a good spot that Dimitri would, um, you know, love to have some assistance on, and, uh. You know, they're just, they're almost finished with that building, they have to put the HVAC and the, um, bathrooms in, in the newly painted red one. Uh, but they're trying to get it ready for the ice cream social, is next weekend or the weekend after? Um, so they're, they're trying to push to get that done, but, um, the paving project is next, and then, you know, it's gonna look fabulous down there, so I think any, any help. You know, pollinator-wise to add to that would be great.
That was a place that we had asked Cindy to ask Dimitri about. If we could have some beds at the community garden. And I, we didn't get. Well, we didn't get the beds, so I don't know, maybe that's something we can work on for next spring, summer too. To have a founder's plot with seed, like a seed bank or something like that, that's really, you know, something that would be great to do.
That sounds good, um.
I think it would be great to maybe, uh, just start the conversation here with Sarah, and maybe if Mel and whoever else, April, whoever wants to help with the pollinator pathway endeavor, we could have our own little silo meeting. After this, but I wanted to get the ball rolling with the group today. And I'm sorry, I'm kind of running, been looking for a stretcher, it's gonna come and get my mom any minute, so.
Yeah. Alright. Uh, yeah, that sounds good. Um. We can, uh, you know, like you say, talk offline with Mel. Get, get some ideas going, as far as, it's, it's great that Nichols wants to do more stuff in. In, uh, in town, so.
Yeah.
We can find something.
And maybe, you know, maybe Mel would be the right person to speak to Dimitri, once we kinda have some ideas that we can, you know, chalk forward some ideas and bring them to him and see what he says. I mean, typically what he has said in the past is, as long as it doesn't cost me anything, it's fine. So it's really just sanctioning the areas.
Right.
They're, they are getting ready to start at the other Twin Brook spot, um, when, sorry, when you go through Liz's Bridge to the right. Um, they've got a lot of, uh, dirt that they're trying to get through, get all the stones out and filter it, and then that's gonna be put over on that side, so, you know. That's probably a project for the fall or the, or next spring, but that's a large area that I think is gonna, you know, metamorphosis again.
Good, I'm sorry I'm being called, um, thank you Sarah for joining on short notice, I appreciate you coming and. For reaching out to us, I think it's, it'd be a lot of fun to work together on whatever we can do. And guys, have a good rest of the meeting, I gotta run, sorry.
Alright Pam, good luck with mom.
Thank you so much.
Alright, Sarah, if you wanna take off, that's fine, if you wanna stick around, that's also fine, but, uh. We'll just be talking about other things if you're interested, so Mari.
Thank you.
Okay, Mari, have you had your hand up?
I'll email Pam separately with a, uh, idea on pollinator path.
Well, I, I missed, I missed the thing that, uh, was weeding needed at, in Twin Brooks, was that what, uh? She said was one of the opportunities, opportunities? Or the newly planted stuff?
At the trail, I think.
Yeah, said in the beginning. That's what I thought.
On Tate Road Trail, you're saying?
I think so, right?
Okay.
And that, that could also be one of the areas that gets added, somebody was talking about, um, the, one of the off-ramps, because the businesses that used to say, you know, sponsored by or taken care of by. Different businesses, and there's one, but it's a state, it's off, right off, right off the merit, so it's a state one that, that is not looking too great, but that got the conversation started again. And reminded me that that might be something that even like Economic and Development Commission, um, you know, might wanna help with, to get, there's certain spots around that could be adopted by some of the businesses, you know, that would be helpful.
Yep, that's good, yeah. Sorry, I'm, I'm typing here, so. Anybody else wanna add anything to the, uh, pollinator pathway discussion, or you wanna?
Actually, just one thing, if anybody remembers this, because I was, as I said, I hope, I was hoping Mel would get on, maybe she will pop on, I was in touch with her earlier, and then Pam's obviously off, but do we remember? Um, Dimitri, if he was hesitant to, for our pollinator, um, for the, the, the pollinator resolution, he did not want to add. Native only, is that correct? I can't remember now, I thought, I thought there was something that he wanted to have the, then this is for the certification, that he wanted that, sometimes you can't have a native plant. And I thought that was a discussion we had, we'd certified the last time, but I couldn't remember.
Don't know, you probably have to.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait till Mel then, okay.
Yeah. Alright. Um, alright, so if that's all on that, then we're moving on, I, I have on the agenda here, thousand trees for Trumbull, not sure what the status is, so I always just leave it on there. What is, anything new there Janet, or, uh, anyone wanna talk about what's happening there? You're muted Janet.
I'm, I'm not the right person to ask.
Okay, it's probably.
A Pam and Mel question.
Probably Pam or Mel, who are not.
They did have, they did have the, um, the ribbon cutting at Twin Brooks this Saturday, which was very nice, and it did attract a, a good number of people, we had a little table down there.
Is that the launch, is that the launch we were talking about?
That was the, that, this wasn't the thousand tree launch, it was just the ribbon cutting.
This ribbon cutting for the, for the reopened park?
Yes, and so the thousand trees was mentioned at that point, and we had some brochures out about it, and Sarah Sterling, um, stayed at the table, I had, we had to run, we were going out of town, so we're there for only a little bit. But, um, so we had some information there for people to take on that, and then, um, in the fall, I think when the next batch of trees goes in is when the, um, you know, when that will happen, the thousand tree itself.
Okay. Uh.
And we had the information at the farmer's market, but, um, I think you probably had one more person than me come up to the table.
I should not have a lot of people, I think Mari had more people. I had, I had a few, but not too many.
I would say I had about ten, maybe.
Oh yeah, well, that's more than I had.
At least, at least, yeah.
I had. Four.
Well, it's funny, we walked in, I walked right past Kevin, I didn't even see.
Yeah, I was walking past Mari, then I heard her, and I was like, wait.
Yeah, so, but yeah, no, I, we had, I had friends that just stopped up to say hi, that was really what it was, so, um, but the table looked great.
Yep.
Yeah, I need to get this stuff from you, Mary, before the, uh, recycling drive, I guess.
Yes, I'm gonna get, they, we used it at the, um, Saturday morning, so I just got a.
You can keep it up until then, that's fine, you know, we can meet the day before.
Whatever works.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, what was, I mean, were there a lot of people there? And, and you were particularly unnoticeable, or? What, what was the, what was the visual thing?
Well, when you, when you walk in, it's, we're, we're right on the right, depending on where you park, I think I saw maybe two places parked, so I didn't really see the. The table there on my right, as I was looking forward. So, but once you walk around, you, it was, you know, we were just right next to a bunch of other people in a sort of a. Series of tables that sort of circled, circled around and went back around, so we were, we were, we were noticeable, I think, it's just.
Yeah.
It was hot, and people I think were just there to grab a bite and, and have a cold drink, it was, it was, it was a hot evening.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm just, I, I think, I think I'm projecting, um, my, my. Frustration, which I think I shared with Pam, that a lot of our messages are not getting through, because we're seeing people doing things that they're not. Really supposed to be doing to our environment. So I'm very concerned about how we get the message out.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll always be a problem, I think.
Yeah, Janet, I think that's a, a concern I, uh, share with you as well, and it's like, we host these events at the library, and April had like four people show up, it's like.
Oh.
Um, you know, the recycling drive, I feel like has gained momentum, but it's kind, it's. I, I would say it's fairly plateaued in terms of participation, this last month was like the slowest month, um, besides maybe the first one. Um, with participation, um, and it's like everyone brushes their teeth, you have a toothpaste tube empty at some point in your travels to save and recycle, it's just. The messaging and people just can't be bothered sometimes, so it's, I think it's. A labor of love, the environmental realm, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some towns, the population are just more concerned, some of the wealthier towns, and, you know, where I live in Southington. You know, while there weren't the same things being worked on exactly. Um. We saw different things with Conservation Commission and, you know, the wetlands that was on there, so similar things there. That town would be slightly more enforcing of, you know, the wetland stuff, a teeny bit. But I think it just, maybe it's post-COVID, and who knows? But it is frustrating, it's a young generation, the grade school kids, like my grandkids that are having more interest, perhaps. So it's gonna be a long labor of love, you know, decades potentially. But people who are middle-aged and older, in most cases, forget about it, unfortunately, unless it hits them over the head.
I met a few, I've met a few young people at the, um, at the farmer's market, so that was a little encouraging.
Good.
Alright. Alright, so I have next on the agenda, if we're moving, we can, um, I have. Waste reduction, uh, under that I have recycling. Food scrap initiative and coastal cleanup day, so if you wanna cover any of those recycling. Uh, Mari, anything's new there? You wanna talk about any new initiatives, or anything, anything happening?
No, not much, we, we don't have a collection for the pens anymore, I'm gonna keep it on the list and see if we can find something by the fall, but. We might have to take it off the list, um, if we don't find anywhere, um. Yeah, that's about it, I think. I think too, no.
Alright, and then, um, oh, we don't have Pam.
The coastal cleanup day, I can talk about that if we're moving on.
Yeah, sure, I don't think we have anything new on food scrap, anything new on food scraps? I got my, uh, I signed up with RWS for, um. For composting, so that's, but, um, I don't think that's worthy of, of inclusion in the notes, but I'm, I'm happy that I'm doing it.
I, I missed my, my last pickup, so my green bin is not very happy.
Ah, I bet it smells good.
Outside and, and hoping, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, I think they're coming, uh, tomorrow actually here, so. They do it, they do it for anybody, they do it whether, whether or not you're a customer, they'll do it, an existing customer, right? They'll do it for, uh. For new customers, I guess, makes sense, because then they can try to, maybe. Get you for other things.
What does it cost?
Ten bucks a month?
Okay.
Yeah. Alright. So nothing much new there, um. The.
Coastal cleanup day, we have to go back to George and get a, um, confirmation on the date. Uh, we threw out a couple of Sundays in September, I think there was one that was preferable, because it closely aligned with everyone else's. International coastal cleanup events, so I'll circle back and see if he's any closer to approving that, um.
Okay, what, did you have, what was the date?
Uh, I forget, hold on, I think it's like the eighteenth or nineteenth, somewhere around then.
September, yeah. For Saturday, is it usually, or something like that?
Um, Sunday, so I think we were looking at Sunday the seventeenth, or back update being the twenty-fourth. We're just trying to get approval for one of the parks and, as a starting point.
Okay. Alright. So you're wa, you're awaiting George's, uh, approval?
Yes.
DPW, okay. Alright, and then, um. On the farmer's market, we did talk about that, um, I don't know, is there anything else we need to discuss? Well, Pam's not here, again, I think Pam's sort of coordinating the farmer's market, do we have? People signed up for the next month? For, uh, for August? Do you know?
I think the next sustainable day is in September, and Pam and April, I think, are doing that one, if I remember correctly. Uh, Pam might have her master gardener table next month, maybe?
Alright, that's fine, so we don't have to.
Don't, don't hold me in the notes, too.
Um. No problem, we're not. Um, alright, so then we're down to the, getting near the end here already, um. Let's do, well, let's take care of the, the easiest one, perhaps easiest one, and I'm glad Richard's here, because Richard said, um. That in an email recently, you were, uh, willing to forego your spot on the. Um. Team, sustainable team. For, uh, anyone who might be interested, other persons who might be more active, and Janet, you've been. Here now for quite some time, attending every month as a, as a guest. And so, um, I was just wondering if you might be interested in being, now, I'm, I'm not sure. I know we have people from designated locations, but Pam, Richard, you and Mel and Pam are all on Conservation Commission, right?
Correct, and, you know, I was on pretty much since day one.
Yeah, you've been here.
Yeah, initially it was helping to cover, you know, conservation, but we have good representation on that. I'm, I'm on three town groups, I cited, this retirement is getting busier and busier. And so, I decided to, you know, i- if it didn't matter, I would just stay on and, you know, do what, whatever, but I don't wanna take a spot away from somebody. Who would actually be active, my main thing is, you know, QR codes and technology. And QR just haven't really taken off like I thought, you know, they might, and historical never had responded, and I've kinda stopped. You know, asking them, and I mean, even if I was just even a guest, I mean, I'm not going anywhere, you know, knock on wood, knock on wood. Um, so I mean, I would still be around to help on stuff. And what you guys are doing is great, but you guys are doing a great, you know. And I'm not helping on the stuff, your primary function, so I don't wanna, you know, take a spot, if that matters.
Okay, I just really, I really appreciate that, Richard, um, and I think. Um. We would, we actually can't act on it now, Pam's gone, so we don't have a quorum, so we, we can't actually make any moves, but, I'm glad we can discuss it, because Janet's, Janet's here every, every month. And active on various things, and Richard, you know, as you say, you're not, you don't have to disappear from the, the scene, you can just. You know, if you can give your spot to Janet, who is, is active, and she's interested, I haven't actually asked you, Janet, but if you're interested in joining the team, then certainly. Uh, we, we'll, we'll review and see, um, you know, what spots are open, because different people, or it's just the public. Versus somebody from the nature center like me, somebody from conservation so forth, so, um, but Mari, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I don't know who I talked to about, I thought it was Mary, um, but I thought we were not backfilling the position, because we had enough members, because I actually reached out to someone. Who's on the Friends of the Library Committee to gauge her interest, not knowing if Janet was interested, or if there was even going to be the backfilling of a spot, but I do have someone. Who's interested that would bring, uh, library representation, which I feel like we've been partnering, um, with, so I just wanna make sure, if there's this position open, we are officially opening it in the best way to include anybody who might be interested. And maybe opening two positions, if that's the number of people we have interested and that we can include, because she's really interested in like. Um, food waste and recycling initiatives, which I feel like the team could use some help on, because we're very conservation dominant, um.
Hmm.
But, uh, again, I just wanna make sure we go through whatever process we need to, to open the spot, you know.
Yeah, and I have to look at the, um. Whatever you call it, the, it wasn't a bylaw, it was a, um.
Yeah, I'm looking for the resolution.
Council resolution, right?
Yeah, I have the, of course, what I've pulled up is the old resolution, um, but we had, Mel was going to step back as, um, when Pam came on to conservation. Um, because she figured she was busy as, you know, busy enough, um, but then she continued with the meeting, so we kinda just had an extra, but we do have members at large as well. Um, but it is, so we've got, um, I think it was two conservation, one, one, uh, nature center, um, town council. And who am I missing? There's one other, and then.
I haven't pulled it up yet, but it's.
And then there was, um, uh, community at large, so I, I will find that and send that around.
Okay, actually, I have the resolution here from twenty eighteen.
Yeah, it was resolved. No, that's, yeah, it was, it was updated since then.
It was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Um. Presentation, no, that's not it, yeah, we'll have to look at it, but, um, I guess the question is, I'm not sure if we're limited to how many, I like the idea of having. Somebody who will be here. Pretty regularly, like Janet is, um, and, and then we have quorums, which is great, um, and active people, so that's good, um, I don't know the, the library person you're talking about, uh, Mari, but if she wants to be active, that'd be great to have. Again, somebody else who's, who's, uh, active and would come to all the meetings, so. Uh, Janet, is that something you'd be interested, I guess, is a question for you?
Yeah, I, I think I, I mean, if it's okay with you guys, I'm quite happy with my guest status, because then I can, then I can, you know, focus in on my, my particular conservation kind of interests. Um, so, I, I'm good with that, I, it would be nice maybe to see some young people, I don't know how young, but, uh, do we have to be eighteen, eighteen?
do we have to be eighteen, eighteen or older?
Young to me.
Yes, she does.
She got stuck right there. We'll see how it goes. I mean, um, we've got some interested people there. I don't know, who's the person at the library, Mari, that you're talking about?
Not a library employee, she's a, I, I think she said she's the Friends of the Library, that like a board or volunteer group. But she put me back in touch with Amara to do our presentations, cause we were talking heavily on the, um, sidelines of the tennis matches at the high school about, um, recycling, and she's really passionate about that, so, um, anyway.
Alright, so we'll look into it. Janet, you're not completely averse to it, are, are you? To being a, a, a member? But you're, but you're more, you prefer to be a guest? Is that what you're saying?
I, yeah, I do.
Okay, alright, well, we'll keep, uh.
Loyal, loyal, very loyal.
Well, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, you know, maintain as a guest as well on that, and you know, um, I tend to be on a lot of meetings. Even though I'm not very active, you know, currently, that's why, I think it'd be great to get more, you know, different town groups and conservation is more than represented. Um, I don't think my conservation has to be a maximum of any one party. That shouldn't matter here, I don't, hopefully it doesn't matter.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, and thank, you know, it's good that we're not, cause this is not a political thing either, it's conservation. But that's part of the deal there, but having a wide range of, of groups represented is more important, I think.
Let's go, alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna table it till the next time, and maybe, um, Mari, if you wanna follow up your, with your friend of the friend of the library and, uh, see what level of interest she might have.
And we'd also ask Sarah, if Sarah would be potentially interested since she's on here.
You're ambushed.
At least younger than I.
Yes, well, again, yeah, I mean, it's true, if you're, if you're super interested in, you know, that's another possibility, so, we don't wanna.
Um, I appreciate you offering for me to stay on, because I've actually been wanting to attend, um, some meetings in the past, and then it just happened to be, um, that I reached out to Pam about the Pollinator Pathway, that she advised me to come to this meeting, so I've been looking for a way actually to get involved, um. I would love in the future to attend like more as a guest and see how this goes, if that's possible, I was gonna reach out to you after to see, um. But it all seems very interesting. I've learned a lot already just listening, that I thought I would have been, you know, more, uh, in the know about living in town, and, um, I'm happy to hear that there's so many progressive programs, you know, in the works.
Yep, well, that's good, um, appreciate your interest, and we do have, this could segue into the final agenda item, which is currently, we are s- uh, certified by this, um, su- sustainable CT organization, which certifies towns throughout Connecticut as bronze or silver, and now there's a new gold standard that one can meet. So we've been silver, we got silver certified two years ago, I think it is, and, um, now we have to recertify, you can't just be certified and stay certified, you have to recertify. So that means we have to go through and do a bunch of stuff. Richard, is that, are you waving high or?
We even had, had Mel, cause she popped.
Oh, Mel is here, look, it's Mel.
Sorry, I'm late.
We're, we're just up to you.
Oh, great, great.
We could, we could actually back into the back, go back to talk about, um, Pollinator Pathway stuff. We were talking about, we have Sarah Connor from the Nichols Garden Club here. And so she's interested in, in helping out, uh, from her standpoint there at the Garden Club. Um, apparently they're doing some work at the NIA, um, site for some rehabilitation of, of invasives and so forth, and looking to do more in town, um. So I guess, uh, the question, there was a bunch of questions that we said, wha- what, what would Mel think? So let's, let's go back and, and revisit those, um. Let's see, what was one of the questions? Oh, one of the questions was at the, was it the Nichols, um, park? Is that what the question was that we were talking about there? Um, we were trying to get the, um, like a planning bed, I guess, and didn't get Dimitri's approval on that. We're looking to get Dimitri's approval on something, sorry.
Yeah, that was the, um, uh, at the, uh, Historical Society property, where they're redoing everything. Dimitri's getting closer to getting that finalized, so we were thinking, well, I was thinking that might be, since it is in Nichols and it's the Nichols Garden Club, that might be a nice spot if, uh, that I'm sure Dimitri would be happy to have some assistance with on Pollinator Pathway.
So, um, and he said no?
Or, no, just, I don't think he said no, but I think in the past, as Pam had said, Dimitri's like, if you, if you provide it, I will take it, you know, that kind of a thing, but I know certain spots where certain things can be done, but, but, you know, we were saying that might be a nice, a nice spot, um, as related to Nichols. And then there's also saying at the, um, at Twin Brooks to the right, I know he's getting all that, all that dirt ready to, um, to get all the stones out and to turn it, you know, to find, find dirt, um, to plant over there, and then the VFW. So it's trying to see how many places in town where kind of we can continue to grow the, the pathway. And then how can, how can, you know, others that wanna be involved, like the Nichols Garden Club, help with that, and um, they're doing a project in, um, the, at the parking lot, uh, at, at the, um, with the, what you might call it, the kickball fields and parking lot, they got a small grant, so they're starting something there, but, um, that was the catch up.
Oh, okay, um, so I have some, uh, good news, let me see if I could find it, some very interesting news uh, about Twin Brooks, so, um, let me see if I, well, I'll just tell you as I'm trying to pull it up here, so, um, yes, when you come in to Twin, Twin Brooks to the right, there's the circle and to the right, um, that's like a peninsula that sticks out, and in the past, when we've had floods, you've got the Booth Hill Brook that comes in and intersects with the, uh, Paquonic, and then floods and kinds of debris piles up there. So, um, um, Dimitri has wanted to do something there. So this grant came up through what, uh, group called the Pollinator Partnership, uh, along with Toyota, uh, and they have a grant for pollinator seeds. So we just applied, so Dimitri said if we can get seeds for that, we had to put in like an aerial shot of what that area looks like, um, am I able to, uh, share my screen? Yeah, okay, alright, let me see if I can get onto a full screen thing, um. We had to submit like an application with an aerial shot and, uh, and so it's almost, I wanna say it's one point three acres. Uh, and so it's possible that we might be able to get a lot of seed for that one point three acres for free. And he is ready to, uh, prepare and do what they call, um, uh, a winter planting, so we would plant the seeds actually in November, if we get them. Uh, if, and, uh, then we'll have a pollinator garden there, so it's pretty, it's exciting, he is like, see, sometimes you, you just kinda have to hit it right with something, like a project that he's had in his mind that we can help get stuff for, so if we can get the seed for that, um, that's like another, uh, spot in Twin Brooks that we can add, um, pollinator stuff. So we've got the Thousand Trees, the, the native tree walk, he's got the Veterans Pollinator Garden, which he planted, um. Then he's got this peninsula, which hopefully we'll plant, um, and then we have signage that, um, Don Watson, you guys know Don Watson from, so he's going to, uh, he's in the process of designing signage uh, for Twin Brooks, that highlights Twin Brooks as a mosaic of biodiversity. And he's got kind of this map, um, that we're gonna work on, actually, we're meeting tomorrow with Dimitri, so Don Watson and I and Linda and Dimitri are gonna meet at Twin Brooks tomorrow to go over signage. So I think it seems like, I get the feeling, uh, if we can just focus on Twin Brooks for, for all of our you know, tree and pollinator initiatives, it's just easier to pool like all the money and focus into Twin Brooks, because then we can create kind of like a, like a nature walk or, uh, to go from site to site. You've got the older meadow there that he's been working on, we've got the frog pond, um. They're planting the riparian buffer like along that twin, um, Booth Hill Brook there, cause they moved the road, so they've got this whole area that they're gonna plant. So there's at least five projects there of different kinds of, uh, ecosystems that are either have been restored or will be restored, and, um, I think that would be kind of like, uh, you know, because it's on the Paquonic River Trail, um, we could probably get a lot of attention and you know, have a lot of projects going forward at Twin Brooks. So that could be, um, you know, maybe why, I don't know if, if, uh, why he's maybe not, not wanting to do other things, cause it seems like his attention right now is at, on Twin Brooks. So, um, so there's a couple of, couple of things going on there, which are, are gonna be fun, I think, for us to work on.
So you're looking, did you apply, you said you applied for a grant for that?
Yes, so, um, I submitted last Friday, um, and it is a grant of seeds. So you have to tell them how big the property is, you have to show photographs, you have to give a management plan, uh, which Dimitri kind of has a ready to go management plan for any project that he does in Twin Brooks, um. So he gave me the information, and then I submitted it, um, to this Pollinator Partnership and, and Toyota, and so hopefully we'll get some free seeds for that.
Do you know when you'll hear about that?
Um, probably, I wanna say within a month, because, um, they want to get seeds to people who want to plant in the fall like us, so, you know, September, October, November, December. All the, the seeds, all the locations have to be planted by next May, and the goal is for them to have uh, five thousand acres of pollinator gardens out there, so we, we would contribute one point three acres of the five thousand, so there's a lot of seed.
How many seeds do you plant in one point three acres? Must be a, must be a pile.
It's gotta be, uh, it's gotta be a lot, it's gotta be a lot of seeds. And, and so you have to prove that you know how to prepare the land, doing, using machinery and a slit, slit seeder, I think they call them, um, and we're gonna, you know, rent one of those, probably using some of our pollinator money, um, to rent, so that he can put the seeds down, so. Uh, yeah, so that's a, that's a fun project that.
Well, that's good.
He's kind of excited about, so that's.
So Dimitri is, is, is very amenable to doing stuff in Twin Brooks, pollinator stuff. More so, it seems, than say at the Nichols, uh, Abram, um, Nichols Park, whatever that's called there with the, the, uh, community garden, just as an example.
Yeah, he seems to be, um, not interested in that. However, I think, so Sarah, if I remember, um, I was talking to the head of the Garden Club in Nichols. Uh, I can't remember what his name is.
Josh?
Josh, yeah, so he was full of energy, and, and he said that the area that they would like, you guys would like to plant is the slope that comes from the parking lot to where the farmer's market is, is that still the area that you guys are interested in?
That is.
Okay, so, um, I guess, so that's NIA property, right? Yeah, okay, so that would be something, um, I think that would look really nice, cause you'd get a lot of visibility there. Um, I'm not sure if seed is the way to go, my plugs might be better on a slope like that. Um, but I like that idea, I think, you know, there, there may tend to be funding available if we can prove it's something that's like open to the public, and it is our farmer's market, and we get a lot of visibility and signage. So, um, I, that, I, I think that would be a, a fun project. And I don't think you'd have to get Dimitri's approval on that, cause it's an NIA property.
Yeah, we got approval just from the NIA Board for it already, so I think that's really all we'd have to work through.
Okay. So what's your next step to apply as the NIA or to, um, you know, apply for grants, I mean, or to come up with a planting plan or?
Um, a, a planting purchasing plan. Now, yeah, we have the money in our possession, and we have the go ahead from the, um, NIA Board, so we're all set to go. I just think we are in the planning stage still.
Okay. Alright, well, that is cool.
Yeah, so you, feel free to use, I'll, I'll volunteer Mel as a resource there for you. You know, you know Pam already, so.
Yeah, we have plans, um, so depending on like the light and the soil and what it's like there, if it's dry, if it's sunny, if it's hot. Um, we have planting lists and some plans that might at least help. Um, to give you an idea of like how many plugs you would need and all that stuff.
Yeah, I would love your expertise, maybe, um, we can connect afterwards and talk more specifics on that.
That would be great. So Sarah, I met you at the plant sale, right? You came to the Aspetuck Plant Sale, that's right.
Yes, you did.
With your truck, you were buying stuff.
Yep, a, a whole lot of stuff.
Uh, well, that's great, okay, so I'm gonna be.
Was there anything else that we, uh, that was on our, that we were talking about, and then we said, oh, let's, uh, we, let's ask Mel about that. Was there, was there anything else? Anybody remember?
I just have stuff related to the certification.
Yeah, for certification, right, okay. So that would be our final, um, uh, agenda item is recertification, which, I forget, what's the date that it's due, August sixteenth or something, what is it?
Fifteenth or sixteenth.
Fifteen sixteen, it's coming up pretty quick, it's probably the fifteenth, cause that's a Friday. So, um, yeah, so we have like, hmm, less than four weeks, um, but it seems doable, we had, um, Mary and I talked with, um, a couple people there from, uh, Sustainable CT, and if you wanna bring them up to date, Mary, go right.
Yeah, it's the, the, our, one question, and I'm hoping it works, um, uh, one question I had was on, um, going through for the homelessness data, and so I think that we're set on that based on, on what, uh, I was given from social services, one slight problem is that you're supposed to have twenty-four hour day access to, um, providing housing, um, like immediate housing, and we have cooling and heating stations during the day, but we don't have, um, they can do one or two nights at a hotel, they would put people up, so I'm hoping that I kind of minutia the wording enough, because we do provide help with two-on-one, and, uh, you know, there's, there's a whole checklist of things, but I'm, I'm hoping that doesn't disqualify us. Cause if that does, then all this work is for naught, um, so let's hope on that, uh, and then they said that our equity item, I didn't, um, I thought we needed a new, that we had to update with a new item, but they said since it was the twenty-one look back, we make it, so we can use last year's, uh, I mean, twenty-one, and then it just has the, I believe, the update if it's changed on the census data as to who we are, so.
Yeah, it was pretty, uh, it seemed like it's very doable, we just have to put, like you're saying, if we get that, for which, I forget which, uh, action is that, there's what, fifteen actions now, fourteen, fifteen actions? I forget how many there are now, there's a whole bunch now. They keep adding to the different things that you have to do, but, um, everything, ex, is, is that homelessness, is that the one?
That was the homelessness.
We're concerned about, yeah, and that's relatively a new one too, so, um, no big shocker that we don't have a place for uh, people twenty-four hours a day.
And there's all, there's, I believe, she said there was only one or two people that have, uh, approached them that were, that were homeless in the last two years, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Mary, for the equity, I'm sorry if you don't mind me, uh, jumping in.
Yeah, no, go ahead, and then I wanted to go through the list, so go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, when you say it's rolling and accepted, this is just like a general question, I guess, but I'm concerned with the equity, since that was a huge one, and under my umbrella, the tremble sustainable youth, right? Wasn't that the equity last? Do we have to update all of the information, like what they've been doing the last two years, or is it just, it already counts, cause it was submitted two years ago, and it's still in the timeline?
Well, since we're going for bronze, we don't need that. So if we were going, if we were going for silver again, we'd need, I think it's three items, and since we're going for bronze, we only need the one, so.
But with that one, does it?
But we don't need to update it.
Twenty twenty-three, or is it just what was submitted, it's already? Twenty twenty-three, or is it just what was submitted, it's already counted, nothing needs to be done?
Nothing, nothing needs to be done, um, since it's still within that timeframe. So if there's any easier, what I've been going through for all the ones that say ongoing. Um, I've been going back and I have been adding, showing that it's been continued progress on all the other items. So I'm going through like updating for what's going on at the library, what's going on um, with Parks and Rec, what's, you know, things like that programming. Um, but for that one, what was Kevin, I'm sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't the sustainable youth, what was the other one, because we had?
It was the food, um, the one that the town did that we barely even knew about, and then we realized that was a great thing, the.
The grant for restaurants?
Yeah, it was the money they got and they were using it to provide meals to people what from local restaurants. I forget what it was called.
Isn't that funny, because I thought it was the one that you did with the science program that we were talking?
That was, no, that was the previous, that was bronze, that was like.
Oh, okay, then you know, let me take a look at that, because the um. Uh, we did, we did put ARPA funding towards that program again. And so I'll look at that to see, I was thinking it was Kevin's, so I didn't go back and look. Um, so I'll look to see, it's the the um, the meals program, uh, and I can provide update for that.
Yeah, that that was Rena, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we put more money towards that and and the um, the main street dollars, the same thing, so a lot of things have have changed. Through the same program, but they've changed slightly, so I can do an update on that. So I'll let you know, Mari, to make sure we're covered. And then if people, I I don't know how to share my screen, if anybody wants to share their screen, I can go through that chart. Uh, quickly to show where where we stand on these, and most of these unfortunately, Mel, are gonna be driven at you and. Um, I'm so busy and April, so. We'll see what we can get away with in the minimal, so um, Kevin, do you have the sheet that I sent?
Uh, oh, the one you just sent?
Yeah.
I will find it momentarily here, let me see.
I have it open, I can share the screen.
Oh, do you have it? Okay, good. You share better than I do.
You know, ma'am, sitting here going, where's the share screen option, so.
But, can you see it?
Uh, whoops.
I've got my, I've got mine open, so let me see what you got.
You see it, guys?
Yep, that's it. Okay, of course, I'm blind. Well, I'll go back, you know what, I'm gonna go back to mine because I'm blind. And uh, hold on, exit full screen, and then you guys can follow along on that if you want to scroll it through, Mari. Um, so that, so that first, so the number one, I'll go back, I said I'll take a look at that. Um, the, I'd sent the number two, which is the thriving local economy. To uh, Ralph to see if he might be able to um, help us to just update that. But I didn't hear back, so I'm just gonna go back and. Uh, you know, I wasn't sure if he was gonna be on today, I'm just gonna go back and I'll update that.
He told me he couldn't. He emailed me earlier today and said he can't make it.
Okay, so I'll go back and take a look at that section and put some updates, um, shouldn't be a problem. Number three, I sent the form saying, does anybody know how to make this interactive? Um, it's an easy five points, that was three point one point one. Um, and it's just Glastonbury had put a pledge out and it just asks you to do. To check off, and so I figured if it's interactive, that's just an easy, quick thing to put out on social media, um, like on a. You know, I don't even know what the word, Google Doc or whatever or something, so people can just click it and then resubmit it, like when you're taking a survey. And we can ask people to say we're going for a recertification, you know, just kind of. Bring community back into it and see if we can get people to take the pledge, it's a good reminder, and it's also, I thought, just kind of a fun community thing, so. If anybody knows how to do that, I will resend you the form, which um. Um, you know, it's in the interactive. Does anybody know how to do that?
Yeah, you know, in order to do that, you'd have to, um, they have their privileges to be able to log in. To say, you know, Google Sheets or Google Docs, they'd have to have access to the Google Drive if you're talking.
Well, not, yeah, not, I didn't mean our Google Drive, this would be, um, this is something that would just, as when they did the survey, when you take a survey online. And you're able to just fill the survey out, you know, click on A, B, C, or D, and whatever, and send it back, so. However, you make something like that live is what I'm trying to do. Send that to you, Richard, and you can take a look at it.
Yeah, send it to me, because Sarah from Conservation had done that.
Yeah.
Uh, like, you know, a year and a half ago, you know, I think it's gonna work pretty well.
Yeah, okay.
Free.
Okay, so I'll send you that then after the meeting, um, the three point one two, we are set with, that is the um. Uh, let me see, is that the, is that, wait a minute?
Watershed education.
Yeah, so that is the the one, I'm just reading, citizen science, there's three point one two, um, I think that is the. Uh, gee, sorry, we're saying. I'm not, I have to go back to buy my sheet, hold on, three point one two, um, to see which one that is, um. Three point one two.
There's, three point one one was also watershed education, but that.
Yeah, okay, so three point one two is the, is the, we, the updated brochures. Which um, which Mel just had done and uh, the letter about people that are are not uh, doing what they should be doing. So that is that one, and um, so that just got printed, Janet's gonna take a section around Pinewood Lake, Mel's taking a section. Um, Janet's got a group of people and we'll see how many we can get active on getting that out, because we're we're trying to put it in mailboxes versus dropping it. Um, but so that is really just the same letter that went out, well, updated version in, that we used from seventeen and then twenty. Um, and so now that's, that will be getting out now.
We're not putting them in mailboxes.
No, they're gonna be hung on the side.
Well, yeah, whatever, we'll deal with it.
In, yeah, in the, in plastic bags, so I have all the bags, Janet, I'm gonna pick the letter up tomorrow, and I'll drop that to you, and I've got the brochures here.
Awesome.
Um, the uh, three point ten point one, uh, invasive species, we're set with that, it's um. The question I had below, that was the one Mel that had to say if it was a um, uh, aquatic. So I'm not sure, so that was one of my questions to you, if you can take a look at three point. Ten point two, to see if we, if that is applicable or not, if that's, the language is is correct for that.
Okay, so there's um. Invasive species um, that are. Aquatic, like in the water, and then there's waterside, which already are kind of addressed in that. Uh, waterside brochure that we just had printed. There's like two pages on invasive species there, um, that are water side. Um, so, must apply to water bodies.
Yeah, see, what I picked up for the, so three point ten point one, it's uh, and I'd sent you that one with any, any portion of an inland wetland. Or water course without a permit or in violation, and that was to do with that, so. So that was covered on that, but then the next one is asking basically the, um, you know, the same. You know, saying it's the same thing if that deals with that, so. If so, basically, I'll go, I'll, you know, I don't want to go through it all now to look at regs, but that's one of the areas. Um, the pollinator pathway, this is really just, you know, as we've just been discussing today, so it's really the twelve, three, twelve point one. Um, and point two, uh, is to just provide the information that you've kind of been talking to. If it can just get, you you know, put, you know, written up together, if we have enough of what we have to get the points. Some of it is, I mean, one is like five points, so it's it's, you know, we don't need all of these, but I figure ones that are easy to do. Because I'm trying to put in more points that we need in case we get anything backed out, but if there's anything in those pollinator areas that you think you can get to. That won't take a lot of time, that would be super, um.
Yeah, I mean, we've got the native plant, did we use the native plant list already for points or no?
I think, I believe it was the, that's why I was gonna check with, um, uh, I'm saying Janet, with Pam, I think. I think we updated it after that time that she'd gone through and had updated it, so.
Yeah, I think we did update it, and then um. Uh, the enhanced pollinator pathways, pollinator gardens, um, I don't think that we included. So we've got the town sponsored Veterans Center, which has a pollinator, the garden plan in it. Um, and now we've got the Twin Brooks programs.
Um, yeah, I was hoping the one that the uh, that you're talking about up at the the vet, yeah, the vet area at the top, and then the one Dimitri's doing to the right, that's why I was asking. When you would, you might hear about that, because to just show what went into that, uh, and then if we were approved. But um, and I.
Signed it too, um, that we're working on, which is.
So I'll grab the, I'll grab these, the um, description of these and forward to you for each one and. Um, and just see what is an easy poll, I honestly haven't looked at any of the pollinator, I've been working on the other ones, so. There might be things, let me see how far I can get, and then I'll send to you to to finalize or add, because I know you're crazy busy.
And pollinator pathway, they want us to add native, I'm surprised we didn't have native in there already, but.
That's, yeah, so I just wondered if Dimitri had an issue with it, but I was just looking at it, um, uh, our, when we did the resolution. It was Town of Trumbles hereby declare a pollinator friendly community and encourages and supports pollinator health and urges this is community members. To adopt, so it doesn't say the town, and I believe that was Dimitri's issue, I was trying to remember. He said you can't always plant native, there's a same thing as you can't, you can't, you know, not use pesticide everywhere, because there are, there is a need. So I'm gonna see, I, you know, if we can get this on the August, um, on the August council meeting. And just add in there that that we're declared a native pollinator friendly, as just opposed to a pollinator friendly. And hope that language is enough, because that's twenty points for just.
Yeah, so he and I discussed this yesterday on the phone, that seventy percent native is the um, is the goal.
Oh, great, okay.
From, that's the goal from Doug Talome, that's in in general, that's the goal, and he totally is on board with that, so seventy percent native is. You know, what people, pollinator pathway and Doug Talome and all them are looking at, so.
And we're within that seventy then, I'm assuming for Dimitri?
Yeah, so planting going forward, um, you know, and planting at the veterans, uh, so we have the two veterans, so there's the veterans. Center, which is on Katz's Pond, there's a plan for that, that's pollinator. Um, and then there's the Veterans Pollinator Garden, which is at Twin Brooks by the.
Yeah, I think we would just be able to use the Twin Brooks one, because it's too far out on the, you know, the fact that it had, like, hey, great idea. Once it gets implemented, come back for points.
Yeah, okay.
That's pretty much how they do, but I think that'll cover it.
Yeah, and I think they're a hu- a hundred, I think they're a hundred percent native, but seventy percent, even for the trees, um, the native trees, that's. Well over seventy percent, that's probably ninety percent native trees in the.
Super, okay, that's great, so I'll see what I can pull, and I'll forward to you to to pretty it up and make sure the language is correct. Uh, and then dark skies were set, those three point one, three, and two, two and three, because it's, it was rolling, so I just updated the. Information, um, and then the same thing, the the arts and culture, I'm going through those, most of those are done. Um, we do not have an arts commission currently, so we don't get the points for that, but we just did hire. Uh, recently a new event and arts person, so I put that back in for that five. Uh, the library, I just need to link their minutes for four point two, so we're set with that. Uh, the, it sounded like the uh, uh, conservation plan we are okay with, because it's still. Um, it's, it's, you know, we're still using it today, so as long as we. As we show that it's still, the plan is still there while we're updating the new one, uh.
Hey, we got, I got some great news on that, that has been updated just this week. You know, we've been trying to fight for that, um, change in the regulations for new developments to not clear vegetation on slopes. Greater than fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Uh, and we've been waiting for that and waiting for that, and um. A change was agreed upon, which was okay, but it wasn't really what we were asking for. So then after many discussions with uh, our town attorney, um, he put some wording in. That was totally acceptable to our town engineer, uh, which restricts the removal of vegetation on slopes of fifteen. Percent or greater, which is exactly what we've been asking for, they put the wording in, so. The town planner approved it, the um, engineer approved it, now it's just gotta be, go before. Planning and zoning, we have to make sure that the chairman of planning and zoning will at least bring a vote on this. And that would be a big, um, that should be a big point, one, because that's a big deal. If they get that into our regulations, the wording's there, and apparently Jim Cordone's been working on this actively for like a year. Behind the scenes, so.
Crazy, it takes that amount, but, um, so let us know when that's gonna come up separately, because I think that would be great for inland wetlands, conservation. And our group to definitely be at that meeting to support.
Points for that, okay.
Okay, um, sorry, gotta go back out to that, uh, the uh, clean and diverse, that's a pretty easy one. We have a lot of good things that have recently happened, um, so I'm gonna do the old mine sidewalk in the light, which is uh, close to being done. And then all the work in Twin Brooks, so those, those should be, you know, easy enough to do. Um, public transit, that was an easy one, because um, our last rewrite, we were trying to get the bus station in at Amazon. Um, which hadn't, which was still being built, and so that station has gone in, um, so that's great, so that adds the access there.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, so that was a good one, so it goes from Monroe and it goes through and it makes all those stops and goes into Bridgeport. Um, there's also a, it's, it's, there's, there's another plan that's happening, perhaps a pilot program, but um. I'll say that to get points at the next, you know, next time, unless I have time. The strange one, they're letting us add the seven point three high energy leads, which surprised me. Um, because as you see how old that project is, but I, they're letting us use it. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't have a, anything in the um, renewable energy, so I'm like, okay, but I did put just, so we have something new. That we are uh, putting in new softball lights and um, new auditorium lights and spots, and so those are all gonna be, they're, you know, LED compliant. So I figured just add a little something, just in case.
Are those softball lights gonna be, uh, not only LED certified, but also dark skies, do they have covers on them or lids to keep them from shining up?
They should, I believe, you know, and actually, as I'm saying that, um, there may be something, I'm trying to remember now when I did the the zoning. It might be that um, fields, that's not applicable to fields. I'm not sure, but we can certainly make sure that they're on timers, how do they go off, and, I, you know, all of that, so, um. And I, the, the ones at the pickleball court do have the things on top, so they shine down only, so. You know, so I can, I can check with George, I was trying to use that one too, I'm like grappling for segment.
Oh, yeah, because that's a big deal, you know, and that's very fairly new with uh, state dark skies, um. Law that.
We have enough in the regs that it counts, but it's just these newer ones, so. Um, for the section eight, um, I did the mattress um, component, the compost, um. Uh, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that works, because, uh, so I'm gonna leave that for April, but um, they do ask attendance. And I don't, I hope, I hope our little baby group counts, but you know, she went to a lot of work and it was a great presentation. Um, so it's too bad we didn't have a tape, because we could have put that up there, um.
What about her tree um, education program for all the fifth graders? I don't know if that falls under the pollinator. Halfway initiative, or if you need it there, but maybe she could put it there.
Yeah, I don't, I think, and we could, but I think we only, we get fifteen points, um, I mean, we get, we get five points for three. I think that's why I did that, so um, we're not, we wouldn't get the fifteen points unless, I think we had five. So I, that's why I shifted it, but we can, we can put it where, you know, wherever it's gonna give us extra points. Um, the, so I'll go back to that, but then sir, nine for the strategic materials, so Mari, I know you're working on that. And one of the things I wanted to mention for your fridge port, because when you did have the um. Uh, you, that you had, you had tweeted them, or they tweeted you or something, whichever that is. Um, to thank you and Brianna for what you guys had done, I thought that was a great addition to add for the black plastic. That, um, you know, that we still are having a collaboration with them through our group, so I don't know if that's, you know.
That was Food Rescue, though, that. It's that out, not fridge port.
Oh, it didn't go, it didn't go to, um, oh, I thought it was going to, you brought it to them.
No, no, it's just for our work with Food Rescue, totally unrelated.
Okay, sorry, I thought you, I thought that was fridge port.
I know, it was a nice thing.
Darn it, but I I thought that was great anyway, uh, so I I don't know where you stand on that, you know, if we can add help see in. I don't know if the fact that the transfer station does have a battery collection, if that counts, um, you know, it's not, it's, it certainly isn't. Uh, the, you know, um, what you might call it, smoke detector batteries or anything like that, but I thought maybe, you know, is an option, so I don't know where you have. If you've had a chance to even take a look at that.
Not much.
Okay, and I can send you whatever on Help See, um, do you want me to to put that together?
Sure, I mean, do we have to show both programs, or just Bay State, or just Help See, or? Sure, I mean, do we have to show both programs, or just base state, or just Help See, or?
Well, we did base state the last time, and since Help See was new, I figured that's a, and it's a different type, it's curbside, they might give us points for that. You know, that worth a shot, um. And then, so basically, I just updated all the teapot information for the um, optimal health and wellness. Uh, for air quality, um, I'm going to, I'm waiting to hear from Cindy, the. Uh, we put in place, uh, an ordinance, well, we didn't put in place, Parks and Rec approved, uh, an ordinance for, to put no smoking and vaping. In all the town parks and to take out within fifty feet of, you know, I can't even remember the exact wording, but it had a fifty foot requirement in it. So they approved removing that, and the ordinance, I didn't even notice, the ordinance never got brought to council. So I'm adding that in to update it, so we'll put that on the August agenda as well, um, and add that to it. Uh, affordable housing, I think I can add some events to that, I didn't put any points in case it's not applicable. Uh, twelve point fours, I said, hopefully, we will get that. Um, for the homelessness, and then at the bottom, the innovative, and that's where I had put the thousand trees, because some. As you can see, you get fifteen points if it's ongoing or long term, uh, five points, uh, I mean, yeah, five points if it's a short term. So, uh, I thought with the thousand trees, the fifth, April's fifth grade program, the survey that got sent out from Conservation. And then the fig tree, which Mel were, um, uh, I met with, I don't know if I told you that, with Social Services and Alibis. Um, last week on that, so I think that'll be a fabulous one, so. I don't know if, if you are able, if we can get information on those, to add those to it, because that's a nice kind of a bunk.
Oh, yeah, that's great, well, um.
And it has to tie, so the, so obviously, I'm sorry, Marty's phone is up here ringing. The, so the thousand trees obviously can get tied to, um, with the pollinator and everything that went on with that. Um, and there's multiple ways, okay, there, finally. Um, there's, so I just put, that's why below, we show in the budget that we supported it as a municipality. Um, it went on this mailer, I don't know if that's in the front, but it, it was.
Yeah.
Of that, yeah, the newspaper article that was written about it. So there's, there's a lot of things that have, have gone on with these, the same thing with April's program, so I figure if we can pull those. Um, and use those, but that'll give us, you know, thirty points, so that's a, that's a good one. All that brings us to, and I still have others, I'm working on small ones, but that brings us to two forty-five. So I figure that's enough points where if they're saying, like, the plan of conservation, like, nope, we made a mistake, you can't use that. And they block out thirty-five points, so that's what I'm trying to get us, you know, some extra points here and there for things.
Um, any points that we could get for um, getting uh, Arbor Day Tree City certification this year?
Um, probably, let me, let me, I'll see if, if it can fit in with something. And that might be the whole continuation of the good news story, you know what I mean, that might just be one piece of it, but. So. Uh, yeah, so any, so I don't know if anybody has anything that they think in any of the areas that we might be able to put in to add. Um, you know, as a separate, or if we'll just see what we end up with. And so obviously, we're going for bronze, because we can't hit five hundred right now.
Where, where are we putting all of our, the documents that we create to submit, is there a folder on the drive?
I can't, I can't access the drive, so I'm just doing.
I know, but Kevin did that last time, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put a folder on there, share it with everybody.
Yeah, I'm just going through and putting everything in, then I'm gonna, I'm, now I'm just adding pictures of everything, so I'm going back through all Facebook posts and. Town, you know, visuals that came out, and I'm adding all that, and so then once that's done, I can send, um, send everything I've done to Kevin. And it can go on there and people can take a look, uh, you know, if they wanna make any changes or additions, or, you know, whatever.
Well, just that project in Twin Brooks, not the ones that we're doing, but the, you know, um. The project that moved the road away from the water and replanting the buffer, uh, you know, we had the DEP approval for that. And I mean, that's a big watershed protection, um, initiative. You know, it's been many years in the making, but I don't know if that fits in anywhere.
Yeah, I put it in as uh, the um, sorry, let me get down to what number it was, uh, that was. Uh, the dynamic and resilient, oh, no, sorry, clean and diverse transportation systems and choices. And so it was that can fit in with complete streets, so I used it for that. But that was really the more of the, uh, the fact that the, uh, all the sidewalks had gone in. And that now people can walk through that whole park without walking on the street at all. Uh, there may be an opportunity to add, uh, you know, to add the bulk, because that's a huge, you know, huge, huge. Blood plane thing there, which obviously has been, you know, discussed for a lot of time, but that may fall underwater shed. And again, these are those, the things that, like, watershed pollinators, those aren't really my areas. Um, so I feel like I can't do them justice, and I don't wanna leave anything out. But I, as I said, I can send to you what, what I can pull from things that have been sent from the town, minutes, things like that. And then you can, you know, kind of polish it up and like add, like, you know, anything I've forgotten, like, I'd forgotten about the Arbor. You know, the tree certification, so things like that would be great.
Sure.
So when do you want these done by, not the fifteen, so when, when before that?
Yeah, everything, it's due noon on August fifteenth, so that's four weeks away, so I mean, ideally, we have everything in three weeks. Just to give ourselves some, some room to play. Let's say the eighth. Try to get by August eighth.
I'm trying.
Okay, thank you.
My kids keep coming home and doing things, we have a lot. Yes, having, having fun, and now Jess is having a huge party this weekend, so all these kids are gonna be here for that, so. Um, I gotta cook and bake and clean and whatever, but anyway, um, but so I'll see how much I can get done on this. And again, I'm, these are extra points that we're adding in, I have a couple areas that I might be able to pop in for five points here, five points there. You know, just to get increased, and that takes some of the, the pressure on some of these that aren't done yet, that they don't have to get added at this time. Uh, so, you know, we can play, we can, you know, see, see how it goes for that. So, um, does anybody have any questions on any of that, I was trying to get it through quickly, but it wasn't as quick as I hoped, so sorry about that.
Oh, you did great, Mary, and thank you, you've put in a lot of time, um. I know, I don't have as much time this go around for the submission, so I, I appreciate the.
I just was thinking we had till next, I think we had till next year, so I'm like, oh, wait, what? We have two months to hand this in? I love, so.
Are you gonna reach out to April, though, because she checked in with me and just said to let her know what she needs to do, but I'd rather it come from you as to the options of which. Actions, and she can look them up when she gets back, if that's okay, but.
Yeah, that's, I just didn't wanna bother her on vacation, do you know when she's back?
I don't know, I think she's coming back, like, maybe today or tomorrow, I don't know, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll send it like, what, today's Tuesday, I'll send it like on Thursday. And, like, the, the one, so I did for mattress, it's very quick, so that little section is very short. Um, so she has that for composting, that'll take her five minutes to pull together, and then.
A picture for mattresses, I'll send.
Perfect, um, and then did anybody take a picture, did you happen to take one of April at composting? I meant to, I meant to take a picture and I didn't.
So, we can check with Amara.
Okay, so that, and it's not needed, it's just a nice to have, so I think that's good. And then I, you know, obviously, she's gonna be able to do a quick talk to the, to her tree program, because she knows it, you know, inside and out. So hopefully, that won't take too long, um, you know, and again, we'll do all this, and then they'll tell me, um, since you can't house homeless people.
Yeah.
Or seven, uh, like, you're out, and then I will just cry, so. Yes.
Well, we might as well get credit for things that we're doing anyway, you know, we're not doing this stuff for them, we're just doing this stuff, and.
Oh, I agree, it's, it's hap- it's, it's, we have to get back, not we, I. A little bit back more with the town on things like these, we're doing these things not just to get certified, we're doing them because they're the right things to do, and they improve the town. And so, uh, you know, get our, get a little bit of backup again, uh, so we'll see where we stand.
Well, thank you for keeping this all in the basket for.
Yeah, Mary, thanks, it's great.
Not in the, not in the sustainable drive, but. Anyway, and then Janet, I'll get that information to you tomorrow, and then we can start getting all of that out. Um, separately, I, I, Mel, just, how much did those brochures cost to print, who printed those?
Oh, uh, they were, they were out of our Conservation Commission.
They did. They're like, I thought it was a time, look at, I don't know if anybody can see this, it's this beautiful, like, booklet of, I, I'm so cheap. I'm like, oh my god, how much did that cost, but it's, it's fantastic, and I think it's such a great resource for people to hold on to.
Yeah, they were about, um, I wanna say like twenty-three hundred dollars or something like that, um. So, yeah, they were, they were, um, they were good, so we kind of adapted a little bit of Trumble language in there. But, um, yeah.
Did you, did you, and I should have looked, you know, do you want me to pop a sticker on the front saying to, like, the Sustainable Trumble? Uh, email and conservation email, anything like that on it, is that in the letter by, I know you said sponsored by?
Yeah, no, I did not, um, put any links or anything like that, um, in there, or, or QR codes, or.
Yeah, I don't know, what do you think, add it, not add it, I don't know if people are interested in information?
I would add it.
Oh, you're shaking your head no, and I'm like going, oh.
I agree, and that QR code and the emails will both be good.
Okay, well, I can't do the QR, so, but I will be certain to do the sustainable, sustainable and conservation. And I don't, how do you, I don't know how to do a QR, do we need it for this?
Yeah, and Mary, I can do it quickly, if I have a URL, just send me the URLs you want directed to, I can do it in three minutes.
Okay, remember who we're talking to, I don't know what a URL is, so, if anybody in this school is gonna do that.
It'd be the webpage address.
Say at the top, yeah, yeah.
The thing, well, Mel, do you, do you know how to do that from this brochure? I'm putting it back to Mel. Um, so if you can figure it out, send it to Richard, and I have, um, labels from mailings. Um, you know, the, uh, the envelope, so I will make a bunch of those, and at this point, Mel, uh, Janet had hundred and forty-nine. And then how many are you gonna have at this point, you did, uh, you, you only said a hundred and sixty-five they printed, right? So we'll do.
Yeah, I just had them print enough for, um, Janet for Pinewood right now, I figured we could like spoon feed the printer in, uh, Public Works. Just get what we need and then what we're gonna distribute, so whatever numbers we get from Canoe Brook. Uh, let, um, I'm only like fifteen here, so the other lakes and stuff were kind of small.
Okay, perfect, so, so that'll be good, we'll start with that, so I'll print this out, Janet, and. So Mel, if you can get that to Janet at some point, to, I mean, to, um, Richard. And if you can't do whatever that is, that's fine, you know, we'll at least just put on what we have here, and then we can go to that later.
So what, what do we want people to go to, the, the, our, our sites, like the sustainable site and. Our website and conservation website, is that?
That'd be my guess, unless you have specific needs, uh, so there'd be, you know, one QR code for each, you know, web, web address. But I think also having email slash, you know, the, the web address is good also. But the QRs became more and more popular, and it's, you know, you pop a code on there and not to worry about anything else. Um, you know, I can even put like our logos in there or not. Um, but they're quite generic, all I would give you back is a JPG file, which you could then, you know, print or, you know, whatever. Um.
If you can, if you can figure out whatever you think would look best, work best, and then just send it back to me, and I'll just print it out on a little. Um, you know, uh, what you call it, little sticky, and, yeah, pop it on there, so, um. You know, with my high-tech abilities, I'm going to you, Richard, so.
Yeah. That's where I can, can help, yeah.
Thank God he's here, the QR king, so, um, super, does anybody have anything else on that, or we set? I did think we were gonna be a half hour meeting, Mari. Should have known.
Over and a half, all right, well, if that's it, then thank you, everyone, we'll get to work on the, getting our bronze recertification.
Perfect.
Nice to meet you, Sarah.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, I'll follow up with you on all the pollinator stuff.
Okay.
Okie doke, okay, bye, everybody.
Bye bye.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye bye.